Good evening. I'm calling to order the Fountain City Council meeting for October 24th, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Madam Clerk Roehl call?
Mayor Thompson, here.
Mayor Protem Estes, present.
Councilmember Hinton.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Rick, can you hear us?
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Present.
Seven members present.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us on to item 4.1, presentation. Mr. Trainor, you are up for a years of service plaque for former police chief, Mr. Heber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know we've already had the retirement, you know, celebrations, consolations, whatever we, whatever we want to call them. The tears have been shed, the words have all been said, except that it's really hard to track this guy down after he retired, to give him a years of service plaque. Really hard. So I am presented. Chris, can you come up here?
Yes, sir.
Come on up here, brother.
It's good to be the back for a change.
This is being presented, Chris "Flashbang" Heber.
Whoa.
Public Safety Director, Police Chief, 2015 to 2023, in appreciation and recognition for your years of dedicated service to the city of Fountain. And then I like, really like the quote that's on it. It's not the critic who counts, the credit to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly and spins, spins himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails well daringly. That's President Theodore Roosevelt. Chris, thank you. Thanks for your years of service.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Does he?
Do I get the microphone? Thank you. Thank you. Chief wants me to have the microphone. Thank you, brother. Scott, thank you. I'll start my, can you give me three minutes, Sylvia? That way we'll be good. You start three?
We could do two.
Okay, we got three. I just want to say thank you. It's, thank you for this plaque. I know what it means. I know we did a lot of good work over eight and a half years that we're all very, very, very proud of. I want you to know that it was, it was hard to track me down. Me and Mandy did a lot of, hey, I like to go T2. I like it, dude. Manny and I did a lot of traveling this summer. We went Tennessee, Indiana, Ohio, Go Ohio State, that's for Gordon. We went to Indiana, we saw a lot of friends and family, but ultimately after traveling, I want to speak for ourselves, it was really good for us to get back home to Fountain, right? And to be with the community that we love, be with the people that we love, and the friends that I love. And I just wanted you all to know that. I just want to recognize our two police chiefs that are here tonight. You know, I know their jobs, I know the character of the men that we have leading. I know that even four months later, I sleep well at night, knowing these two are out there protecting our community. I see them from afar. Now as a citizen, I see them up close as we do things together, pink concerts or birthday parties, or building some sort of something in your backyard. That's got me really scared, but they're fine men, leading our community. And I feel as good four months ago as when I stepped out there, where I had the right people as I do today, back here in our community, living here. Just want you all to know, with a minute and 40 seconds left, I really wish Todd was here, because Todd ain't never stuck to three minutes ever in his life. You know, we just continue to pray for each of you, pray for our community, pray for your wisdom and discernment as you lead our city. We pray for, you know, the next, next election cycle and those that are running at Montana High, love the school district. All my friends and family here, you know, coming in here, it's just like old homewind. I'm asked why it's important to me, because as you get older, relationships really mean something. We get a little older, a little crotchier, and I like people a little less as I age, but the people I got in my circle, I love. I love this community. Reagan turned three yesterday. And if I, if I needed any reminder on how fast time flies, you know, that's, that's a stark reminder, because it seems like just yesterday she was born, we were just taking her home, and she's a great member of the community, too. So thank you very much tonight. That is two minutes and 20 seconds. Please know that Todd, that's a record. Mark, I'll trust you to do that. Good to see everybody here. Al, everyone, new director of HR, you know, it's a tough job. And it's good to see everybody, and God bless you all. Thank you very much.
Hang on, just, just hang on. Mr. Mr. Heber? Mr. Heber, could I get you to hang out just a second? Were there any council members that wanted to make any comments tonight?
Sure, of course. I'll keep it brief. As always, Chief, we, we appreciate your service. We, we understand the sacrifice that you make on behalf of the city of Fountain, not only you, but your family, right? So we appreciate your family and your beautiful wife and Reagan for not having their dad at home.
Yeah.
At times. And we appreciate all the things that you've done in the city, through some hard times, difficult times, but through the joyous times as well, right? We celebrate those with you, and we appreciate your, your guidance and your leadership, not only for the men that you serve with and the women you serve with, but for the city as well. So thank you.
Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah. Actually, you started six months before I started here.
Yeah, we did it.
So it's been a ways, but I really appreciate that gray goatee.
Thank you. It used to be brown eight and a half years ago.
I know.
I used to have the most of it, sir. Thank you very much. It's good to see you.
Thanks for everything.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Estes, congrats on the retirement. Glad you're enjoying it. I just want to remind you to take Reagan out to see Carl and his horses regularly, because we need to foster this love of horses.
No, we don't, because that's going to force me to come back to work. I don't know if I can afford horses. I, I can't afford one of Carl's horses. My uncle over there tells me it's like 50,000. So it's like dealing with IT. You want a horse that's 50,000. I don't know what the deal is. So thank you for that, though.
Councilmember Duncan?
Well, you know, thank you for all of your hard work and, you know, your love for the community, your love for Fountain. You're still a hard act to follow, but we do have some good people.
We do.
And that's represented, and thank you for being a part of that also.
Hundred percent.
You know, thank you for bringing little Princess there, so we can see her. We haven't seen her in a while. We miss seeing your family. So I've been waving at her that she can like, I'm not coming. So just, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I miss you.
So much for everything.
Councilmember Corey?
Thank you, Chris.
Good to see you.
Appreciate all the years you, you put in. So the service is great. The only thing I am is I am jealous all the vacation time you're taking.
Thank you. Thank you. It was, it was well deserved and hard fought for. Thank you.
Enjoy that retirement. So thanks for everything you did.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wanted to say anything really quick?
Are you going to wear a Care Bear costume on Friday?
I'm going to attach it to be a giraffe, giraffe. So I will be the biggest unarmed giraffe this time you've ever seen. I think it's very appropriate, six, yeah, giraffe.
Chief Heber, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Your, your leadership is well noted in this community and will leave lasting memories. And the lessons that you taught to the young people, call them young people, under your leadership, in many, many departments, in many ways, will, will leave our city richer and in a much better place. And you, you trained up your staff under you to take over well, and without even a glitch or a hitch anywhere, and things are just running along really well. So thank you.
Makes me proud.
Thank you very, very much. And thank you, Mandy, for loaning him to us all those extra hours and those weekend phone calls. And thank you very, very much. And enjoy being bored. So.
She hasn't kicked me out of the house yet, told me to go back to work. I did have hernia surgery, which I got booted downstairs for a couple of weeks. But, you know, I, to your point, I said this several times, you know, during my retirement, you know, Mandy and Reagan deserve a lot of credit. Mandy has a huge heart for this community, you know, was a teacher and an admin here. And, you know, I, I was going to mention just a, a proud moment in our community. Many of you know, there was a three-year-old kid lost in our neighborhood. Last week, Mandy, this week? This week. I'm retired, so it's, you know, hard to know the day. But with instantly on that message going out, there was over 100 people in our community out looking for that kid. And that's just very, very, very special. It's a credit to our community, it's a credit to the people we have here, our diversity, our military, no man, woman left behind. I was just really, really proud to see that. Mandy and Priscilla, Devon's wife, and other people helped lead that charge in our neighborhood to get out to find that kid. So, you know, I just appreciate everything that Mandy does, and as for Reagan, did for me, and did for our city during the time that I was a public safety director and chief of police. She had a heart for our cops and for first responders that was equal to mine. And she was definitely as much as part of my success, especially during the hard times, Fred, as anything. And the thing about time after you retired is, you know, you don't remember the hard times as much. You remember all the good people and the good times like tonight. And seeing everybody here that I consider my family, my brothers, my sisters. And I just have a lot of love for this community and each one of you, and each one in the audience. So thank you very much.
Thank you, once again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us on to item 4.2, Board Commission and Committee Appointments. We are appointing one regular member to the Planning Commission, Mr. Kalani Kai, Leana, Leana, I don't want, okay.
Good evening. Kristi Martinez with the City of Fountain tonight. For consideration is appointment to a one-four-year term to the Planning Commission for Mr. Kalani Kai McConney. Yes, okay. I had to phonetically spell that. To Planning Commission, he would be filling a vacated seat by Ms. Angela Hacket Larson. And he is here tonight, if there are any questions.
All right, would you like to come down? You don't have to, but.
Perfectly fine. Madam Mayor, council members, thanks for having me and listening to my application tonight. Members of your staff, I really just have to say that I really wanted to be a part of Fountain. With my 26-year career in the military, in the Army, Fountain's always been near and dear to me. And this community is, like Police Chief said, that has been a tight-knit community, small heritage community, that I wanted to be able to serve in any way, shape, or form. So with you guys listening to my application, reading it, you know, I'm just thankful that you guys were able to do so. And pending any other questions.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your military service. And you said you were back here the first time, 1998, I think you said.
That was, yes, Madam Mayor.
It's just changed a little since then around here.
Absolutely. 1998 is my first duty station. I was here when I was 19 years old, then got stationed back home in Hawaii, and then got stationed right back here in 2008 with my family. So yeah, my, my wife didn't want to leave. She didn't want to leave Colorado. And she called Colorado her home. So Fountain's been great to us. We lived up off of Stinson Hills. Definitely not our, our scenery, not the environment that we chose. We love the, the environment that Fountain brought to our family, and this foundation is where we decided to call our home. So that's why I want to volunteer to serve any way, shape, or form to, to help our community thrive and be successful going forward. So.
Great, thank you very much. What would council like to do with this? Or do you have any further questions? Councilmember Duncan?
I don't have any questions. Just want to say thank you for joining the team.
Yes.
Okay, what would like council like to do with this? Councilmember Duncan, your light is still on. I just want to make sure that you was.
I pushed it to do the.
Oh, okay, go ahead. Councilmember Duncan?
I just, I may want to make a motion to accept his position to the Board Commission.
Okay. Councilmember Corey?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the appointment of Mr. Kalani E. Kai.
It's Kalani Kai McConney, last name is Leana.
Okay, thank you very much. All righty. All right. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote. Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried. All right, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for coming down tonight. All right, that takes us on to item five, Correspondence Comments and Ex officio Reports. We're going to start this evening with Mr. Steve Schleicher, who is our county clerk and recorder. And I asked him to come down tonight and just kind of go over our, our election process with us.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, good evening, council members. Steve Schleicher, El Paso County Clerk and Recorder, and thank you for the invite. Since ballots went out last Monday, I've been under the desk in a fetal position, but all is going well. So Madam Mayor, I want to start off by saying I apologize to the voters here in Fountain. Last Wednesday, we recognized my elections director, identified an oversight within the election in Ward Two here in the city of Fountain. Once that oversight was brought to my attention, there are particular questions that I asked, one of which is, does this harm any voter within the city of Fountain? It does not. Does this harm the candidate and/or the campaign associated with the candidate? It does not. And lastly, does it harm the municipality? And it does not. And what the oversight is, is basically the candidate in Ward Two, who is running unopposed, was also included on the ballots to the Fountain voters in Wards One and also Wards Three. So what we basically did is answered those questions, then we reached out to the county attorney and also the Secretary of State. We wanted to get information from them, and basically what came down is the resolution that I put forth, that was absolutely accepted by the Secretary of State and also by the county attorney's office, is there are eight precincts within Ward One and Ward Three. We are excluding those precincts from the Ward Two count. And then I actually had a conversation with your city manager, is I'm going to be sitting there providing daily updates and things like that, because we are tracking that. But none of the votes from Wards One or Wards Three will be counted in the race for Ward Two. So it's a very simple process, and as I mentioned, is reaching out to the Secretary of State and also to the county attorney. We're absolutely in compliance with Colorado law and also with the Secretary of State's rules. But I did have a conversation with Scott today, and he and I are going to be interacting with one another when we sit there and we look at the nightly reports. But it's something that I'm very confident that none of those votes are going to be going towards the candidate in Ward Two. Are there any questions?
Okay, so if someone on their ballot just said vote one, and they just, and they don't live in Ward Two, you're just excluding that.
Absolutely.
So it will not be counted towards the ballot total. So it will not be counted towards the ballot total?
And Madam Mayor, it's pretty simple. If you take a close look at your ballot, there is a barcode on your ballot. There's also a precinct code that's made up of numerous numbers, and that is your precinct. So, to be able to do that, as we are going through the process, as we exclude, we're able to pull that from the eight precincts that are in Wards One and Wards Three.
Is that being manually done? Can you make the computer do that? Or how is that done?
Angie, would you like to come on up? Let's have the professional. Thanks, Angie.
If you could just state your name for the record.
Sure. I'm Angie Leath, Director of Elections. And so what we've done is we have what's called an Agilis, which is a ballot sorting machine. So, all ballots that come into our office, in order to show that the voter has only voted one time and goes into receive status, we're able to upload those eight precincts and they're sorted into its own pocket. So, we, the machine will sort out the eight precincts, and then we will manually open those ballots. We have a special team that'll handle those ballots, and that race will not be included in the final results for Ward Two. So, it's both a machine and humans that do it.
Okay.
And these are bipartisan teams?
Correct. Election judges.
Yep.
And, yeah, and just to, so anybody that wants to go up to the office can stand outside the window in the election office in the county building and observe the elections, right?
Absolutely. And any candidate on the ballot can also appoint a watcher that can actually come into the room and watch the process.
Okay. And they can find out and then call your office and find out how to do all that?
Yep.
Okay.
But I would like to reiterate, though, Madam Mayor, is, again, what's most important is there's no voter in the City of Fountain that has been harmed. The candidate and the campaign has not been harmed, and nor has the City of Fountain.
Okay. I'm going to ask the candidate who the error was made for. Are you comfortable with the resolution that he's presenting? Can we get you on record?
Totally. I believe in our election system. I believe in the system that El Paso County has. I think that we are the gold standard in the state. So, I appreciate it.
I appreciate that. Madam Councilmember, I will share with you is perfection is elusive. And you learn something by each and every election. And I will tell you is that is one thing that I have been working extremely hard on for the last 10 months. And you've probably seen this ugly face all over TV with the number of things that I've changed in elections because this face is made for radio, not TV. But, you know, one of the, just to share with you some of the things that Angie and I and my deputy have done. You've probably have seen the new election ballot box cameras that have been put up where the citizens can now watch that at the comfort of their own home. In addition, is within the first two weeks, I became your clerk and recorder. I signed a contract with Experian. And many in the community are going, what in the world are you signing a contract with Experian? Which we all know is a national database when folks, you know, go and apply for credit. If it's a bedroom set, a car, a house, things like that. But it's a national registry. And what I ended up doing is I sent them 460,000 voter records minus the UACAVA and also our confidential voters. And I wanted to match up our voter list to folks that are applying for credit because when you apply for credit, you're sitting here and you're identifying what your primary residence is. Why is that so important in El Paso County? One of which is we're very unique. I grew up here in Fountain. We're a military community. We have folks that come on in here, and we heard some of the comments this evening where folks will come in and be part of our community for three years and move on somewhere else, which is very unique, more so than any other county in the state of Colorado. So, what happened is we got 50,000 records that could not be matched. So, what did we do with that information? We sent emails. We drafted up and sent postcards. And believe it or not, we saw a thousand percent increase of our voters reaching out going, oh, I forgot to contact you and let you know I'm now living in Guam. Or I'm now living, you know, I'm at Fort Benning, Georgia, things like that. But these are tools that I utilize as your clerk and recorder. And that's basically what I've been working, and not only me, but the 175 folks in the clerk and recorder's office. But those are things that we have done in the clerk and recorder's office since I became your clerk in January.
Okay. I want to remind people, there is an "I voted" sticker.
That's another new thing we did.
On your ballot, the front of your ballot this year. Not the part you mark, but the ballot this year. So, don't miss your "I voted" sticker because that was something people have been really requesting with having all.
And Madam Mayor, that is something that is new with our ballot vendor. And those are actual drafts. That artwork was done by the staff in the clerk and recorder's office. But, folks, we're in, this is the preseason election. We're going into a very busy election season when we have the presidential primary. We're going into the general election. And for the general election, I'm gonna reach out to all 17 different school districts, talk to the superintendents, and I want the kids to draw those stickers for the general election. So, we're gonna have a little contest, and I think that's about building community and let our elementary school, middle school kids come up with the artwork that's gonna be on our general ballot.
Dr. Martin, let's see. We got, did you get that? Okay, so our, just so we, you know.
We're gonna be talking.
Councilmember Duncan?
Okay, thank you for the updates. So, one question that I have is what about write-ins? Is there a place for someone to do a write-in on the ballot? And if they wrote in someone from the different wards, how is that handled?
So, write-ins are only acceptable if they're a legitimate write-in candidate that filed an affidavit with the Secretary of State's office this past summer. We only have one write-in, and that's, I believe, for the Miami Yoder School District. So, there will not be a write-in line on any of the ballots going out to Fountain because we didn't have a write-in candidate.
Yeah, that, it would be printed on there when it comes?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All righty, Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, so I'm in agreeance with you with the power of the youth vote. So, my son just turned 18 this past Sunday, and he got his ballot in the mail.
Awesome.
I was impressed. I was like, I'm not sure if he's gonna get it. But he got his ballot in the mail. So, this will be his first time exercising his right to vote. So, I appreciate all the work that you're doing on that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, is there any questions from any of the staff? Sylvia?
I just wanted to add to Steve's report. And for those voters who haven't actually opened up their ballot yet, there is only one candidate for the seat that Mr. Schleicher was speaking about.
Okay, right. Okay, all right.
Awesome. Great to see everybody.
Well, hang on just a second. Since this is a public thing, I'm gonna see if we have any questions from the audience.
Okay.
And have your business cards out, so. All right. So, we'll go ahead and take questions from the audience. And please, I have one up front, and then I'll go to the one in the back. So, you come down, state your name for the record. And Mr. Schleicher might not be able to answer it tonight. And that's why I said he can give you a business card.
Connie Weisenhent. So, do those ballots get pre-proofed? Like, how did that get through and into the mail and not viewed? And then what's the accountability on that?
So, that is a really good question. So, yes, we pre-proof, and it's actually done through the state score system. And so, what happened there is, you know, it was an oversight on my staff in regards to having the candidates in Ward One and Ward Three. But I also want to share, and this is absolutely no excuse, is we had 44 different ballot types that went out in the mail this past week. And now, by law, we also have to include Spanish ballots. So, that brings it to a total of 88 different ballot types of different things. And what occurs here in El Paso County, why is our ballot types higher than any other metro county in the state of Colorado? Is we're the only one in the state of Colorado that's got 17 different school districts. So, ma'am, that is a great question. And there's absolutely, I take responsibility for missing that oversight on Wards One and Three. Absolutely.
And you can sign up and go up and take a tour of the facility and what they can show you while they're actively counting. But I do want to ask, come on down. I want to do real questions. So, the city is not paying for this? Any of the hand sorting or anything like that going on is completely, the county is paying for it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Could you state your name for the record?
Sam Fortune.
That's the first I've heard about the Experian thing. So, you were actually went into a contract that matches our credit to our voting trends?
No, 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 no. So.
That's exactly what Experian does, though.
So, what Experian does, actually, there are.
Steve, if you could step up the mic.
So, basically, what it is, is going into a contract with Experian is Experian goes, basically provides data to a number of different counties throughout the United States.
Okay, well, who gave you the authority to sell our information?
I didn't sell your information. So, I basically provided first name, last name, and mailing address. There was no confidential information shared. So, last name, first name, and mailing address, which is, the state of Colorado is a Colorado Open Record Act, and you actually get more information off your assessor's records. So, all that was shared was last name, was last name, first name, and mailing address. So, to me, is having pristine voter records, which is the gateway to our election process. And sitting there taking a look at is how many people have moved in and moved out of El Paso County. And when you're sitting here looking at 50,000 records, and you have a number of those that have basically identified that they have moved, please un-register me, that is a ballot that could have potentially been mailed to them.
Yeah, I noticed you guys have a habit of mailing them to military members who do not use Colorado as home of record.
Mr. Fortune, if I could get your comments on the record, please?
Oh, sorry. I just noticed El Paso County has a habit of sending out voting, the mail-in ballots to those who live here in the county but are not home of record to here. And he mentioned, you know, Fort Benning, for instance. I guarantee anybody coming from here to go into Benning, this is probably not their home of record.
If they were registered to vote here in the state of Colorado, is their home of record?
Well, you implied it otherwise.
I don't, I disagree. But the thing is.
Implied those who go to Benning.
Well, they, their home of record was here, then they transferred to Benning. That's why they sat there, and they're still on the voter rolls here.
Maybe, maybe if, if Mr. Schleicher, you could get Mr. Fortune's information, and you could call him and discuss how military ballots and overseas ballots work. And any of his other concerns that he has with the, with the voting process. Because we want to be as transparent and make sure people understand everything.
Definitely.
Would that work?
Absolutely.
I'm just curious how everybody, how that came about, because I didn't even hear about that until he opened his mouth about the Experian.
Okay.
Yep.
I understand. Yeah, we all can't know everything going on, so, yeah.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we actually.
Make sure you get information, though, please, Mr. Fortune, to exchange it with them.
Absolutely.
All right. Okay. Any last questions from anybody in the audience or staff? Oh, okay. Does Mr. Rick have a question, or is someone online?
Someone online has a question.
Okay. Could you please identify yourself, please, and ask your question? Go ahead and unmute. If you're able to unmute, please go ahead and do it and state your name for the record and your question. If you can't unmute, you can type your question in the chat, and our AT department can read it out loud. Had him for a second. Are they able to unmute?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Hi, if you could state your name and your record, please, and then ask your question?
Amanda Copeland Pomelier, P-O-M-E-L-E-A-R. Don't necessarily have a question, but if, so I am registered to vote here. I'm a citizen of the state of Colorado and the City of Fountain. But my home of record as an active-duty soldier is not the same. So, I received ballots in the mail from the City of Fountain, state of Colorado, and then, of course, federal. But my home of record, if we're talking about that phrase, is not here. That's Havelock, North Carolina, because I came up from a rainforest family. And my home of record is also Texas because that's where I established myself the most as an adult employed by the federal government. So, I just wanted to just clarify that, that I am registered to vote here. I do vote here. But this is not my home of record. And that's probably the same for many, many federal employees, not just soldiers or airmen or Space Force folks, you know. I just, yeah, just wanted to state that for the record. Thank you.
And thank you for your comment. And thank you for your service. And I will share with you is, I spent many years at Cherry Point there in Havelock, North Carolina. So, we probably frequent the same barbecue joint there on Atlantic Beach.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. I was actually in Newport, North Carolina. I lived in Havelock. I lived in Newport, and I lived in Morehead City.
Well, you probably went to Garner Farm, too.
Yes, and.
All right, sounds like she needs your number. Okay, all right. Call Steve at work.
Thank you.
You guys can have.
Okay, so when it comes to UACAVA military voters, or any voters for that matter, when you register to vote, Colorado.
Can you explain what UACAVA is?
Oh, I'm sorry. UACAVA is Uniformed Overseas Military Members or Citizens that are temporarily overseas or reside overseas or outside of the state. So, Colorado is a self-affirmation state. When you register to vote, you are signing an affirmation that Colorado is your sole legal residency. Other than that, as the Elections Department or even the Clerk and Recorder's Office, we cannot give any legal advice when it comes to home of record or military service other than you sign an affirmation that Colorado is your home of record. And by federal law, you can only be registered to vote in one state. Other than that, we can't give any other advice. My suggestion as a military member, if you're unclear of home of record versus voter residency, I would reach out to, every military installation is required to have a Voting Assistance Officer, probably part of your family readiness area. Reach out to them, and they'll be able to give you a little more details. But that part of it is more of a legal question.
Okay, great. And I do have one last question.
Yes, ma'am.
County commissioners are coming down to Fountain for their meeting on the road one week from tonight, or today. Today, they will be there in the morning. So, you will be back again in Fountain in a week.
I will. In fact, I will be down here providing my weekly election update. We got quite a few ballots today, and we are gonna be starting, we're doing intake, and we're getting the judges, the VSPCs open, which, by the way, council members, Madam Mayor, thank you, allowing us to have a VSPC down here. So, allowing people to.
VSPC?
Yep, so it's basically in-person voting.
You guys are using acronyms, VSPC.
Yep. So, doing in-person voting, because a lot of our citizens want.
VSPC is?
Voter Service Polling Center.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, sorry about that.
That's okay.
But it allows our citizens, if they're, you know, need ADA or anything like that. But I surely appreciate you guys allowing us to come down here each and every election.
Yeah, and you guys are moving this time. You're not gonna be in the Fountain Library.
No, it's gonna be different.
Yeah.
But I understand it is very beautiful over there.
It's very, very nice. You're gonna be over in our 101 North Main Utility Building.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's been a goal for a long time because that library room is used very, it's just always booked. So, that's great to have you guys move over there, and people have a place to get outside if the weather's bad and not be standing outside in a long line. Yeah. Oh, you have one, another person online?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one more question from Teams. Their name is Carrie. What information was shared back to the county from Experian is their question?
So, which is a very good question. So, the information that was shared back was no differently than the information that was shared, first name, last name, and primary residence. What they ended up doing is Experian ran a query on that information. And of course, you know, it's a pretty difficult query, and we had to go through it as well because we got a lot of Smiths, a lot of Taylors, things like that. But looking at as far as the primary residence. But that was the only thing shared where Experian said, this number of records absolutely matched. These ones did not, which then allows us to reach out to the voter to find out if they are inactive or if they are no longer registered, if they, you know, no longer live within El Paso County or the state of Colorado. And like I said, is when you have a thousand percent increase of, you know, people reaching out and just sharing that they did not un-register here in the state of Colorado. But I will sit there and share with you is, I gave a presentation to the Colorado Clerks Association. And this is something that is extremely gonna be debatable coming up at our state legislature because many clerks today are thinking about doing the same thing.
It's called cleaning up the rolls.
Exactly. Exactly.
Yeah. Councilmember Hinton?
Well, you take the words right out of my mouth, Madam Mayor. So I, I understand what you're trying to do, to make sure that, that everything's transparent and clean up some of the stuff with everything that's going on and every accusation that's thrown out there. We're trying to do our very best in, in the county, and, and the state, and the city, to make sure that we have appropriate people voting, to make sure that we have the right people who are registered to vote, are voting. So I get it, I understand it, and I hope that everybody just kind of looks at it for what it really is.
Yep.
And just cleaning up the records. I know that, well, people might be nervous about their information getting out there, but I, I believe in the, in the system, trust me. I've, I've worked in several different countries, living in the military, and for those people that have the opportunity to vote, it's, it's important. So, so our, our voting is important, and there are people behind the scenes that are trying to make sure that it's very transparent as we do so, and it's only up and up, and it's the fairest as possible, so I appreciate everything that you're doing.
Thank you, sir.
The military ballots are mailed out, how far in advance?
Yeah, 35 days.
Thirty five?
Oh, 45, I'm sorry.
Forty five days?
Forty five days.
Okay, and then they have a little extra time at the tail end to get their ballots mailed, so.
Correct.
And so that's why some years, if it's a really, really close election, that we have to wait for those military ballots to come in, and how long is that after Election Day?
Eight days.
Eight days, okay.
Yep. Well, and Madam Mayor, the big thing that I want the voters to also know is, vote early. And if you're going to sit there and use the postage, please have that postmarked by the 30th, because if it is not received in the office by November 7th, it does not count. So, you know, it's one of those things where you definitely want it postmarked by the 30th, or use one of the 39 secure drop boxes to drop off your ballot.
Okay, I'm just making sure the 30th isn't a weekend, so the 30th is a Monday.
Absolutely.
And, next, next Monday, yes, next Monday.
Yep.
And we have drop boxes at the police station here, we have them at the regional park, and so, or you can come in in person and do it.
Yep, absolutely.
And when does our VSP open here in town?
Is it for November 6th through?
Yeah, November 6th through Election Day.
Okay, so it'll be open for the 6th and the 7th?
Which I'm sitting here, I got all that in the calendar in my book, and I don't have it up here.
Oh, no, it's hard. You guys are working like two weeks ahead towards everything. I get it, I get it. So, well, thank you so much, I appreciate you coming down here and taking time with us tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And answering everybody's questions, and just for the record, let's state your phone number, or the phone number you would want anybody to call if they have any concerns.
Absolutely, so if there's any concerns with ballots, any questions regards the election, please call the office at 719-575-VOTE. So, 719-575-VOTE. We actually have judges that are sitting on the phones, they're doing a great job, so please call if you have any questions, or any questions in regards to the oversight that we spoke about several minutes ago.
All right, and, and then you press zero, I believe it is.
Yep.
Been there, done that, just a day ago.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you for your transparency. I just want you to know that a lot of people in this area, they know you, you know, you grew up in this area.
I did.
And I'm hearing that they are happy, glad that you're in the position that you're in.
Thank you.
Because they know you and they know your character. And also, what I'm hearing from different parents in the area, and I'm glad that the school system is here, is that they would like a mock vote ballot thing to be done in the schools, because the kids don't know how to vote, so they would like to see that happen.
I think that's a great idea.
After this election?
Absolutely.
After this election, but before the primary next March, and got to get, yeah, got to figure it out.
Well, I think I went beyond my three minutes.
Okay, well, thank you, we had a lot of questions, but that's, that was important tonight, I think, to get that, all that information out there, so if people have questions, thank you.
Absolutely.
575-VOTE.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night, everybody.
All right. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Trainer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only announcement I have tonight is for Friday night, is our trunk or treat for the kids, it starts at 5:00 and goes till around 7:00. Well, we always say 7:00, and it always goes a little bit longer, but it'll be right out here in the back of City Hall, so excited for that.
The only thing I wanted to let the council know is that our, the Assistant City Attorney, Kate Parker, has, has left us, and I wanted to update the council on that, and so we're, we're busy trying to look for a new attorney, so if you know anybody, get the word around. But that's all that I had tonight, and Mayor, thank you.
Chief?
Nothing this evening, ma'am.
Chief?
Very quick update, real fast, I wanted to give an update on the Cumberland Green situation with the house break-ins, car break-ins. While I'm not going to disclose any parts of the investigation, know that we're making significant progress, just a couple of points to make, to make the situation a little better is, if your garage door openers are in your cars, you can certainly bring those in your house, and as somebody in Cumberland Green has said on the Facebook page, most garage door openers have a locking mechanism inside the house on the button where you open the doors. If you click that, that prevents people from getting in with the opener, so, and we appreciate the neighborhood's cooperation and their patience with us, we're making progress, and hopefully I have an update soon.
Okay, so the moral of the story is, don't leave your garage doors upper in the car.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, if you could park your cars in your garages, it's best, but, yeah.
Lock your car?
Lock your car.
Don't leave your valuables in there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And keep your garage door opener secure, I mean, it's just another safety feature we can do to, to try to prevent this type of thing happening. It's concerning for the police department, I just want everybody to know that we're taking it extremely seriously, and hopefully I have an update soon.
There's a lot of people ordering online, probably getting ready for the holidays, there are a ton of packages out there, what is your suggestion for people in getting their packages delivered?
You know, there's a lot of different things you can do. Amazon's obviously the biggest one that delivers packages, but during the holidays, there's options to have the driver securely put it in your garage, if you trust them to do so. Always have maybe a neighbor notice packages, grab them up real quick and get them in their house, it all comes down to neighbors watching neighbors, and as some residents of Cumberland Green have mentioned, over the last week or so, they're talking about Neighborhood Watch, I can't agree more. Whatever we call it, I call it neighbors watching other neighbors, know your neighbors, and keep track of who lives in your neighborhood, and then if something looks suspicious, call the police. And, you know, we'll put out something when the holidays draw closer about package safety and just general safety during the holidays.
And, and how about people decorating their houses, or does it make it trouble, difficult sometimes to find their addresses on their houses, especially after dark?
I mean, it can be, most, most folks' addresses are on their garage, or posted on one of the posts out front, so, yeah, if you can, if you can keep that exposed so the officers can find it quickly, but we usually get there, we find a way to find out where we're going.
But it makes it a bit easier?
It sure does.
If you can see the numbers on the house?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Love the decorations, lots of decorations out there.
Thank you.
All right, anybody in the back row? John Lewis?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, John Lewis, Finance Director, just had a real quick comment. There, there were some questions that came up during the budget session a few weeks ago about restricted versus unrestricted revenue, and where we had limited discretion to spend certain revenues, and where those revenues were already committed to certain things, where we didn't have that discretion. Chris, if you could pull that up real quick. And, and the question was, well, how much more money do we have available for streets? If we look at the total revenue here of $87,659, that's for all funds within the city, and $45,772 of it is restricted to water, electric, ambulance, and drainage, we cannot spend the revenues from those funds in any other way other than with those departments, it's against regulations. The same thing with the pension funds of $15,000 that is spent, and, because that's a fiduciary fund. In addition, there's revenue from miscellaneous funds of $7,565. Conservation Trust revenues that come from the lottery can only be spent on certain things within our parks. The Heritage District money that comes from that can only be spent in the Heritage District. The same with the General Improvement Districts, our insurance fund, and then, of course, the Moving Fountain Forward Funds, Transportation Sales Tax Funds can only be spent, the .15 can only be spent on street resurfacing, that's about $750,000 a year, and, and of course, the other is for the buses. That leaves revenue from the General Fund at $34,307,726, that we have some discretion over, if we could go to the next slide. And if you, as you take a look at that revenue number at the top, then we have a contract with Fountain Urban Development to pay for a portion of the sales tax, reimburse Fura for the development that's up on the Academy Highlands. We also have debt service, we have reimbursements for our IGSA program, we wouldn't have the revenue if we didn't have the expenditures, grants that are for specific purposes, our SROs in schools, there, you know, that has to be, that's a reimbursement of an expense, the impact fees that are committed to parks and public safety, property taxes that are restricted to public safety through the 2B ballot measure, transfers that are really reimbursement for costs that the General Fund pays on behalf of other funds. All of those are items that, that we, we can't spend in any other way. So net unrestricted revenue, we could say, in the General Fund is $20,756,726. Take the cost of Police Department, the cost of Fire Department, and the 2B expenses, take that out of that, leaves $7,395,565 that can be spent on streets, parks, recreation, technology, planning, engineering, and administration. That's where we have some discretion. And of that, what we spend on streets of $2,196 for, for the 24 budget, that's 30% of that. And if we could go to the final slide, I have a pie chart that shows where all of the money from the General Fund goes. The big blue mark is the Police Department, the, the orange one that's big is Fire Department, the third largest is Streets, that's gray, and, and then you can see Parks and Recreation and Building Maintenance, the green sliver is Administration, and then we have the, the other funds, and, and the final one, the brown one, is the miscellaneous funds of, of Council, Courts, and, you know, Code Enforcement, et cetera. So I just wanted to clear that up, because I know there was a number of questions of, well, gee, with this revenue, why can't we spend it on X, Y, Z? And there's our answer. And that's all I have, and I'll, we'll see you in a couple of weeks for the first reading of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trilch, is there some way to make those slides publicly available?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there anybody else in the back row? I.T., any comment, anything tonight?
Nothing yet, Madam Mayor.
Okay, H.R.? Okay, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Please vote? Is that your message, please vote? Please vote?
No.
You don't tell people, okay. Okay, all right, you want to discuss dates or anything?
Oh, we did want to mention to City Council that I will be bringing a suggestion at our next City Council to change the dates in December for the holiday. Typically, our council meetings are held on the 2nd and 4th Tuesday of the month, and I will bring it back to council, and I did want the public to know that we do anticipate changing it from the 2nd and 4th to the 2nd and 3rd Tuesday of the month, which is the 12th and the 19th of December. So although we haven't formally changed those dates yet, it will be coming to our next City Council meeting and all for the public to know.
Okay, I'm going to assume nobody wants to come on the 26th?
No.
Nobody wants to come, nobody done that, want to come on the 26th, Dietrich, Richard? Nope? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you very much. All righty, we'll start on the left here, Councilmember Corey?
Well, hold on, well, Councilmember Rickby, does he have a minute?
We'll, we'll get him at the end, yeah.
Okay, I was gonna say, I'm not gonna steal his thunder, but Veterans Day event on the 11th, so I'll let him give you the details, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
Just for the general public, I said on the Housing and Authority Board, we were able to hire a new Executive Director, her name is Ashley Reader, so a great hire, we look forward to, to working with her, and, and she's just kind of getting established in the seat after, you know, Catherine Robey, who was the previous Executive Director, served for 30 years, and she's our first one, and so it is a, is a big gap there for her to get up to speed, so I said you'd be patient with her as she makes her rounds throughout all the different housing that we have in, in the city of Fountain, so that's kind of what's been going on.
Okay, Councilmember Estes? I don't have anything this evening. Okay, Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, we're gonna need to choose a new representative really quick for the Pike Peak Regional Building Department.
Yeah, yeah, after the elections, well, the boards that are open will be, yeah, we'll choose new members. Yeah. Thank you. Is that, are you, one more meeting to go with them?
Uh, yeah, November will be it.
Okay. All right. When did they meet?
They'll need somebody appointed for, in fact, it wouldn't be bad to have them appointed by that time, and they could come, too, and I could introduce them.
Well, we, we appoint, do new board appointments after the new council is seated, so that everybody has a chance to, to say what they're interested in serving on, so we have to wait for that. Do we have an alternate, if we have an alternate, I don't know if we do or not, they can-
No, we don't.
Okay, all righty. Okay. Councilmember Duncan?
A couple of announcements is that the Drug Enforcement Administration, DEA, has its Take Back Day on Saturday, October the 28th, and this is a great opportunity to safely dispose of unused or expired prescription drugs. There are several opportunities, include a drive-through events at the Fountain Library that are right next door, and the Security Fire Department, they are open from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Again, it's Saturday, October the 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. They take solid or liquid drugs, vape products are included, but you have to remove the batteries. They will not accept any injectables or syringes due to blood-borne pathogens. I went, I attended an event that called, it's called Safe Families for Children, and, you know, we always hear that it takes a village. This program helps families that are in crisis, and I thought this was a great opportunity to bring that, you know, these families are facing domestic violence, incarceration, lack of treatment, and they need support, right? The chief was just talking about how he had the support of the community, everyone doesn't have that, and they were talking about how lonely families are, and how lon, how lonely people are who are experiencing these types of crises. So if you would like to help any families, it's called Safe Families for Children. And they did have a chart, and they were talking about the homelessness in Fountain, and they mentioned District 8. And they said 63 of our families that are in District 8 live in shelters and transitional housing. 260 have doubled up due to economic hardship, that means multifamily homes, and eight are unsheltered, and 11 live in hotels and motels. So that's a total of 342 people in our community that's in Fountain for Carson District 8 that are in crisis, and 24 of those kids out of the 342 are homeless. And they did state that food insecurity was most common in rural southern Colorado, and we know that Fountain is considered a food desert. I just wanted to share that information. So in September, Sharon and I attended the fourth graders, it was reported already, I just wanted to share some information. The teacher wanted us to talk about government at Eagle Side Elementary, and they wanted us to include how we use collaboration, communication, and problem-solving in our current position. So I just want to read some of the things, I got this big envelope full of all these lovely, which made me cry from the kids, and one, I'm just gonna read a couple of them. Hello, Ms. Duncan, I like how you let us play an activity, we had an activity called the Fish Bowl. So the children got to play a scenario of them sitting in the dais and being able to discuss an issue without it being controversial. So, hello, Mrs. Duncan, I like how you let us play an activity that was fun, and, and you talked about land use for me, thank you for your time. Dear Ms. Duncan, thank you for taking your time to teach us more. Also, I like the game when we set at the dice. Lastly, I like when you talked about voting. These are some of the things that our kids, they're little sponges, and they love to learn in- little sponges, and they love to learn information. So I'm just glad that I got the opportunity to talk to our children at our school and Eagle Side. So anytime anyone wants me to do so, I would be more than happy to do so. We already talked about our ballots, but again, on Monday, the 30th, is the last day to send our ballots by the mail. I can't reiterate that. You know, that is the last day. And on, on a sadder note, before I came, I turned on social media, and I saw the family of Tom Downing, who was up over our chamber, that he is requesting prayer. And they did video him, and he say, he said that he is fighting. So I just want you to keep the family, Tom Downing and his family in prayers. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. I went to PPACG last week, and they have done the on-the-road thing for the last couple of years, and the meeting was all the way up in Fair Play. Unfortunately, I hit that day when you couldn't get out of Fountain. And, and then when I got back into town, you couldn't get into Fountain. And then I needed to turn around for another meeting and leave Fountain. So I spent about three hours in traffic that day, but it got a lot accomplished. And so we all have had those days before, and I thank you PD for doing the best you can when our town is just gridlocked. It's absolutely gridlocked. There's nothing. And I really, really plead with the citizens, when the town is gridlocked, I know we all need to get places, but driving on the wrong side of bridges, turning around and going down the on-ramps on the freeway, rushing around people, you know, cutting people off, that, that's when, that's when our kids are watching us. And, and we really need to have our best behavior. And it was a pain to sit there on the on, off-ramp, a mile from my house, and not be able to move for 45 minutes. But it is what it is. And, and people that are making their own way off the freeway, it's very dangerous, you know, to drive down the embankment onto Banley, and you have, really have no control of your car in some of those situations. So please, please use your best, best judgment when you're out there stuck in traffic. And like we said, little eyes are always watching us. And Fort Carson had a great summit the other day, and that was exciting to be part of that. And it was, I will, the first time in 10 years I've gotten onto Fort Carson, I haven't gotten lost. So that was quite an accomplishment for me that day. Councilmember Rick, are you on the line there?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just a quick comment to follow up on Commissioner Corey's Veterans Day, November 11th, at 11 minutes after 11:00 a.m. on Saturday, we will be having a Veterans Day ceremony at American Legion Post Number 38 on Southmore. I encourage everyone to attend. Fountain Up will be providing sides for the meal immediately after the ceremony. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay. That takes us on to course, public to be heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. I only have one card here tonight, and it's from Ms. Rosenbaum. So if you please can down to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Thank you, Fountain City Council, Madam Mayor. My name's Liz Rosenbaum. I've been a local community member for about 23 years. I've been on the Chamber of Commerce for about 12, and as of last night, new board member. So I love that. I'm a business owner, and I work diligently for protecting our water from PFAS, the Midway area. We got a $110,000 grant, and on Saturday, we get to pick up some water pitchers until a main facility can be built. Last Sunday, I got together with some other friends, and we hosted a really great meetup at Jennifer Zener's Coffee Shop, Old Town Coffee Shop. We had a really great time. We had about 60 people attend. So I just want to do an appreciation to Jennifer with her coffee shop. I'd been going around to a lot of different events throughout the state, and, you know, I was talking with her. I was like, hey, Fountain doesn't have a Pride event. And she's like, oh, my gosh, do it here. So we brainstormed for quite a while to see what that would look like. And thank you to the city permits department. So I learned there's two different type of permits. One is for the park. Another one is a temp, temporary permit event type, where all of us would have to get a business license. And that was a lot. We had quite a few nonprofits coming in that are very local, and it just didn't seem like it was a good use of city's time or our time to fill that out. So we just switched it to a really fun little meetup for a couple of hours. A big thank you to Fountain PD for responding so quickly. We were being harassed by, out of very far away people. And then two other local business owners were harassing, harassing the families and kids with bullhorns. And that was kind of sad to see. Two of the individuals who are local business owners, at the last 15 minutes of us hanging out, started shoving people physically. So thank you for Fountain PD for being there, and also for their mental health provider that they had. Thank you very much. That was very useful. So our kiddos who were there, they had a great time. We had parasol patrol with giant umbrellas, so they were able to shield the children from horrible signs. And the best we could do was play Disney music, so the children didn't have to listen to hate, hate speech from people thinking that they had a right to free speech. And an event put on by, it wasn't even an event, it was just a meetup. We were just hanging out for coffee. It was really fun. We did have about 30 people sign up to organize a Pride event for next year. So that one, we are definitely looking into a McCaff Park permit. And the reason we chose to do that is because of the safety, that having an event with a permit in the city of Fountain is very great, because there are no firearms allowed at a city park. So thank you for that. And one of the reasons why we wouldn't do it at a county park down the road is because they allow open carry, which is not safe for children. As you know, there's people who don't like Pride events, or rainbows, or something. And, you know, I worried about their mental health when they behave that way. So thank you to, you know, Todd Evans' team, Kimberly, the police department, city council, for letting me give you an update on a really great event, really great meetup that we had. And Jennifer Zener is just such a gem in our community, with how inclusive she is and how kind. So thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'm here. I'm Liz Rosenbaum, local community member.
Thank you. All right. I don't have any other cards. So that will take us on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. So we have items A, B, C, D, and E on the consent agenda. What would council like to do? Councilmember Applegate?
Move to approve all items under consent agenda as is.
Okay. Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote. Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried. Okay, that takes us on to item 8A, old business. Ms. Martinez, last time, we combined a couple of these. Are we?
They can be separate.
They can be separate this time. Okay. That takes us on to item 8A, second reading of ordinance 1792, an ordinance annexing to the city of Fountain that area to be known as School District Number Eight Arena Access Annexation, located at 10535 Jimmy Camp Road, and herein more specifically described in Exhibit A.
Good evening.
Just one second. And I'm opening a public hearing for this. Is that correct or not?
No.
No, not on the second reading. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we didn't do it and then do it wrong.
Nope. Good evening, Kristi Martinez, City of Fountain Planning. This is the second reading of ordinance 1792, which is considering the annexation of approximately 1.38 acre parcel located along Jimmy Camp Road and contiguous to the Fountain for Carson School District Eight campus. There have been no changes to the ordinance since first reading. Are there any questions for staff?
Okay. Are there any questions from council? Okay. Are there any questions from anyone in the audience? And I want to make sure we give Councilmember Rick a chance to respond if he has a question.
No issues, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Dun, Applegate?
I move to approve ordinance 1792 on second reading.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for ordinance 1792, second reading. Any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote. Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried. Okay, that takes us on to item 8B, second reading of ordinance 1793, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Fountain, Colorado to Parks and Open Space, POS, district related to that area to be known as School District Number Eight Arena Access Annexation, generally located at 10535 Jimmy Camp Road, and herein after more specifically described in Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. This is the second reading of the initial zoning of the same parcel that was just previously acted on with ordinance 1793, with an initial zoning of the Parks and Open Space District. There have also been no changes to this ordinance since first reading.
Okay. Are there any questions from council? Are there any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay. Seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Duncan?
I motion to approve ordinance 1793 on second reading.
Okay. Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote. Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried. Okay, that takes us on to item 8C, second reading of ordinance 1794, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Fountain, Colorado, from planned unit development, PUD, to Parks and Open Space, POS, district for property located at 10515 through 10525 Jimmy Camp Road, and herein after more specifically described in Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. This is also the second reading of ordinance 1794 for a rezone request for parcel owned by Fountain for Carson School District Eight from the planned unit development to the Parks and Open Space, again, is contiguous to the school district's campus. And there have also been no changes to the ordinance since first reading.
Okay. Are there any questions from any council members? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay. Seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Hinton?
I make a motion to approve ordinance 1794 on second reading.
Councilmember Estes?
I second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for ordinance 1794. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote. Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried. Okay. Thank you. Okay. That takes us on to item nine, new business. 9A, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda. There were no items removed. Item 9B, Resolution 23-050, resolution of the city of Fountain opposing Proposition HH and undue limitation on municipal budgets and local control of property tax relief. That was something that I requested council, if they wanted to put on the agenda, and everybody wanted to put it on for discussion and a possible vote on it. And so staff did bring up a resolution. And I'm sure everybody's had a chance to look it over. And what, does anybody have any questions or comments on This would be a resolution in opposition of Proposition HH that's on the ballot. And Proposition of HH is the one asking essentially to keep your table returns after a few years. And it does, it does not, in my opinion, reduce the property taxes like it claims to do. So does anybody have any comments on this? Any comments from anyone in the audience? Okay. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution into the record, and then we will take a vote on it. Resolution 23-050, resolution of the city of Fountain opposing Proposition HH and undue limitation on municipal budgets and local control of property tax relief. Whereas the city of Fountain is aware of the financial burden that increased property tax valuations may create and desires to provide locally appropriate relief without negatively impacting its ability to provide needed services and programs. And whereas the city of Fountain relies on property tax revenue to provide critical services funded locally through property tax revenue to reduce debt used to fund infrastructure. And whereas the city of Fountain annually prepares a budget and certifies a property tax mill levy through an open and public process under existing law. And whereas by Senate Bill 23-303, the Colorado General Assembly referred to voters' Proposition HH that among other things would impose an unnecessary and arbitrary limit on the growth of property tax revenue for certain local governments unless the governing body votes to exceed the limit after a public hearing and does not provide any opportunity for reimbursement of revenues lost due to the limit, permit the state to retain, retain money that would otherwise be refunded to taxpayers under the taxpayers' Bills of Rights, partial reimbursements to local governments for reduced property tax revenue and rental assistance programs. And whereas after factoring and partial reimbursements of lost revenue, Proposition HH is estimated to decrease revenue to local governments statewide on net by at least $100 million in 2024, $350 million in 2025, and $550 million in 2026, based on assessive reporting. And whereas Proposition HH would unnecessarily constrain the ability of the city of Fountain, city council to control its budget and provide locally appropriate property tax relief. And whereas a long-term fiscal impact of Proposition HH on the city of Fountain and other local governments that serve our community is unclear and will cause uncertainty in our budgeting process. And whereas Proposition HH would dictate local property tax rates, overruling the decisions of voters, and allow the state to retain refunds entitled to citizens under the Colorado taxpayers' Bill of Rights. And whereas the revenue entitled to local governments will be reallocated to other services, notably elementary and secondary education, which already has tax assessing ability within their districts, and which a previous statewide ballot initiative failed. And whereas the complexity of Proposition HH will impose unnecessary administrative burdens on the city of Fountain, now therefore, the city council of the city of Fountain opposes HH and strongly urges a no vote on this this November. So reading that resolution aloud, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Corey?
Like I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 23-050, opposing Proposition HH.
05, 050 or 051?
You know what? The resolution says 050, Madam Clerk, and the, on the agenda, it says 051.
Says 050 on these papers.
Yes, it does.
That's the trouble.
Did I read it right or no?
I understand that. This says 050. So give us just one second to make sure we have the correct one.
Okay.
050 is a correct number.
050?
Yes.
Okay. So I read it right?
All right. Yes, you did. It's fine. It's okay.
Okay. Gold Star in participation trophy.
Okay. So we have a motion in opposition to HH. Do we have a second? Councilmember Applegate?
I second the motion, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we have two seconds. Okay. He said let, let Councilmember Rick have it. Okay, we have a, a motion in a second. Is there any further deliberation from council? Okay. Seeing none, please vote. Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried. Okay. All right. Now we're on Resolution Number 23-051, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fountain, Colorado, adopting the amended City of Fountain Code of Conduct for elected officials. Ms. Huffman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. And just for the public's knowledge, city council has met at their annual retreat, actually semi-annual retreat, on July 15th of this year. At that time, the Code of Conduct, Code of Ethics, and other municipal codes were brought to city council for and other municipal codes were brought to City Council for review and reminder. During that meeting, the City Council decided that there were some changes and updates that they wanted to make to the City of Fountain Code of Conduct in relation to City Council and the general public. So this Code of Conduct is for City Council and the general public. And then at their October meeting, October tenth meeting, to be exact, there was another amendment recommendation from changing the public speaking time on agenda items from three minutes to five minutes. And those changes are reflected in this document before you. Madam Mayor, I do understand that there is a couple of things within that document that we're going to kind of point out, not only the changes, but there is another area under our public hearing process.
Okay. All righty. So I hope everybody has it in front of them or can pull it up. I wanted to make sure that the changes. I contacted Sylvia today and just made sure that I wanted to make sure we were aware about what all the exact changes were that were voting on them. So we have the front page of the document. And then we have page two that says overview and responsibilities. There is no changes on that page. On the next page, that begins with policies and protocols under legislative process. You want to just kind of explain what you did on that part right there, Sylvia?
The clarification under that process was to specify on the council's Robert's Rules of Order and how typically the council does not follow Robert's Rules of Order. We do have a separate ordinance within our code book that allows us to be a little bit more lenient on those rules, but they are spelled out within our code.
You just basically kind of moved that around to make it a little bit easier to follow. Okay, all righty. And then I'm going to come back to that page, but I want to continue on to another page. And then it says, another part she moved around at the end of hearing protocol was after the close of a public hearing, no more public testimony will be accepted unless the mayor reopens the public hearing for a limited and specific purpose. And again, that was just kind of moving that around up to that area. The next change is a page that says in public meetings, and it says to be fair and equitable in allocating public speaking time to individual speakers. And this is where the request Mr. Rick made. And we agreed generally each speaker will be allowed, allocated five minutes for items on the agenda. So that is the change in that section. And then also Mr. Rick requested a change under if attending a board or commission hearing meeting. It used to be the council members shall remove themselves in their proceedings in a public hearing at a board or commission meeting. And it was requested that it should remove, but not make it shall. And everybody agreed on that one also. I did want to point out though, if everybody could look back to the page where we had the legislative progress under public hearing protocol. This is when we open a public hearing, like, you know, when I bang the gavel and open a public hearing. Under public hearing, that still does state that the standard time granted is three minutes. So my question is, we are changing it under agenda items in the other section to be five minutes. And this would be three minutes under public hearings. Did council want to stick with the public hearing, the three minutes during a public hearing when we are doing that? Or change that to five minutes also so that it's just a little bit more, the public is used to it being five minutes for items on the agenda in general? So go ahead and, it's open discussion. Go ahead and just hit your mic if you'd like to speak. And I have Councilmember Hinton.
Sure, I'd like to just make it clean across the board and just extend it to five minutes for both areas so that it takes a little bit of time for people to kind of get their thoughts and their suggestion kind of going. So I think the first couple of minutes will allow them to do that and then eventually it'll probably be three minutes by the time they get their thoughts together. So I think we should just keep it five minutes for both.
For the public hearing and the items on the agenda? Okay? Hang on here. Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, I agree with that. I still think we ought to go to five minutes for the items not on the agenda.
Well, yeah, but that isn't being addressed right now, so.
It should be.
Okay, Councilmember Corey?
Yeah, so I'm fine with five minutes. Because you were saying for five minutes for the public to be heard and then five minutes for your public hearings, right?
It's five minutes for public to be heard on an item on the agenda and five minutes for them to be heard for a public hearing. Okay?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, five minutes across the board, yeah.
All righty, Madam Clerk? I think that, oh, Councilmember Rick, did you have any comments on any of that?
I'm fine with what's been discussed so far.
Okay. So the only change we're amending this document to tonight is to change under the public hearing protocol is from the, to make that granted is generally five minutes. Okay? So you would need an emotion, not an emotion. Goodness, you would need an emoji. You would need a motion as amended, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All righty, is there any further questions or comments from council on this? Councilmember Estes?
I don't have anything that, but Councilmember Applegate brought up about us talking about all of the speaking time for the public. And I'd like to pass this out so everybody has this information. The city clerk has the information for anybody in the audience. This is a chart that I made up of all communities in the state from eighty thousand down to fifteen thousand that I could find that they have a time limit on the public to be heard and if they have a time limit on agenda items. So I just think it's a good information. So as we talk about this, so I have copies for everybody. Councilmember Rick, I'll get one emailed to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sylvia has one for you?
They're on the back too.
Yeah. And it's just good information because we've been talking about this and I just want to point out that there is a range around the state. And like I said, these were communities that I tried to find that were comparable to our size. And these, most of them do three minutes, but there is one that does two minutes. And there's one that does five minutes for public to be heard. And then to find on agenda items, it's harder to find what they limit, but there were some. And that was, there were some that were three minutes. There were some from three to five. There were some that were four. But I just thought it was good information for everybody to have as we make these decisions so that we know that we're being consistent with kind of what everybody else is doing.
Okay. Let's give everybody a chance to look it over. Go ahead.
This may be more of a question for our city clerk. So right now we're addressing the agenda items in an agenda and the public hearing items. How does our code address the public to be heard? I know that's come up a couple of times.
Public to be heard is actually under an ordinance.
Separate, okay.
It is, it's part of our code. And I gave Councilmember Duncan some of that information. The original code was set in nineteen eighty and it was set for ten minutes. It changed in two thousand eight to three minutes. And so it does need to be done by ordinance.
By ordinance?
By ordinance, it's a separate.
All right.
Could you, could you repeat? You said nineteen ninety-eight.
Nineteen eighty was the first date, am I mistaken, Councilmember Duncan? I gave it to her, it's at the bottom. Nineteen eighty? Nineteen eighty was the first ordinance that was approved for ten minutes. And then it changed again in twenty, two thousand eight, is that right? Two thousand eight to three minutes. It's been three minutes since two thousand eight.
Okay, and the reason I want to clarify that is just I want to make sure because we've had a few people bring that up on council. And so what you're saying is that needs to be through an amendment of that two thousand eight ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
And it has to have two readings.
As opposed to this is by resolution?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would just like, I would like to encourage us to get consistent on everything because it gets confusing to me when it's three minutes here, five minutes here. It's hard for me to keep it straight. That's all. And now I know this isn't, the public hearing is not on the agenda tonight, but I know that Councilmember Duncan had requested it on an agenda and I just want us to be prepared for that discussion.
Okay, thank you for the information. Okay? All righty, so this is the, let's see, amended Fountain Code of Conduct for elected officials. And is there any further discussion from anybody on the council or any comments from staff or Sylvia?
No, ma'am, I have nothing further.
Okay, so any questions or comments from anyone in the audience? If there is, please come down the microphone and state your name.
Alain R. A. Rhodes. I'm sorry Sylvia, but I could not hear what you were saying. I can't hear hardly what any of you say.
No worries, Al. Let me know if you can hear me. We're speaking about three different parts. Two of them are in the Code of Conduct. One of them is a public hearing. That's where we have to publish a notice in the newspaper. There's state statute requirements that it gets posted in the newspaper. That was amended tonight within the Code of Conduct to five minutes. We then have another item in the Code of Conduct that speaks to public speaking on items that are on the agenda. That has been changed to five minutes. The last piece is under public to be heard on the agenda. It is currently set at three minutes and it has to be changed by ordinance, a separate document.
So that'll be on a separate?
Yes.
Council meeting?
Yes, sir.
But they're all saying, yes, they want that?
Well, it hasn't come before them yet to change it to the five minutes, but I mean, council can answer that and what your thoughts are.
So that, the one that has to be changed by ordinance will be on a different council night. We don't have that in front of us tonight. We're talking just about the agenda items and the public hearing item.
Okay, but what I kind of did hear from Tamara that she wants everything altogether equal instead of threes and fives and whatever?
Councilmember Estes can speak for herself.
Yeah, I do, because I just don't, I think it's confusing to the public if we don't have consistency. The problem is we can't vote on that piece tonight because that needs to be an ordinance change. So I just, this was my opinion and I was giving this information to prep us for that.
Okay, so then in two weeks, we'll talk about it again?
If it's on the agenda that night.
Okay, thank you.
And that'll just be a discussion item, not an ordinance being voted on.
It's up to council. We can actually schedule a discussion item earlier in the agenda and have an ordinance later on prepared for an amendment to it on the same agenda, just later on the agenda. And if council chooses during that discussion to not go forward with that ordinance, then it will be voted down. We can do it all at the same time.
Okay, yeah, I would like to not be creating ordinance on the fly. And if it's listed as a discussion item, I think our citizens expect it to be a discussion item and then it's listed as an ordinance later on. Okay, I think that sounds like a good plan. Okay, I got some lights on up here. I have Councilmember Hinton?
Madam Mayor, my suggestion is, I don't know if it needs to be a discussion item. I think that for me personally, that five minutes is five minutes. And if you're asking me, and you are, I would just like for us to just kind of go ahead and get it on the agenda, get it on as an ordinance and then make it a vote. I agree with.
Can I have, ask you to hold that thought until we get down to city item agenda at first? And let's just not add confusion to the item in front of us. So I'll choose you first when we.
Yep, no worries.
When we get down to that, okay? All righty, okay, all righty. Do we have any further discussion from anybody on this in front of us here? Councilmember Duncan?
So we seem to be missing a process because this was asked to be put on the agenda for tonight and it's not there. So it's like we're starting over as if it was never brought up and it was, right?
No, we're not starting over like it was never brought up. It just, it just was not on the agenda tonight and so the agenda is.
But it was supposed to be, right?
Well.
Well, I'm not saying we can't, I'm just saying it was supposed to be. So to sit here and say that it wasn't there, I mean, am I the only one up here confused about that we, that I asked? It should be in the minutes, right? So we are, to me, I don't know, I don't know what's the next process because it was supposed to be on here and it's not. So what's the next steps?
And City Council and Mayor, I did want to address that. This item was slated for this council agenda. Inadvertently, it got left off through translation. We actually had staff that was out of town trying to log into the VPN and for whatever reason, it didn't save. I do apologize that it's not there. But like I said, I can recommend that even at the next meeting, we can list a discussion under old business and under new business actually have the ordinance. If discussion is had at the same meeting and the ordinance is considered at the same meeting, then you kind of kill two birds with one stone if you want to go that route.
Okay. All right. So we will, okay. Is that what you would like to do, council?
Do we need to vote on that or?
No, no, just direction by council. Do you want to have the agenda and the ordinance on this?
Well, I had asked Councilmember Hinton to just kind of hold that until we get to agenda requests. So if we can just finish this before we add some confusion to the item that's on the table in front of us. Okay. Council, okay, I saw somebody's light off, they turned it off? Okay, so we need to address resolution number twenty-three dash zero five one, the amended City Fountain Code of Conduct for elected officials. And that does not deal with the public to be heard at the beginning of the meeting. And so what would council like to do with this document here tonight? Councilmember Corey?
So I'd like to make a motion, resolution twenty-three dash zero five one, as amended, to allow five minutes for open public hearings.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Councilmember Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for resolution number twenty-three dash zero five one as amended. Is there any further deliberation? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried. Okay, that takes us on to item ten, City Council Agenda Request. Councilmember Hinton, I said I'd pick on you first, I mean choose you first.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. I was just saying that, you know, I think as far as discussion, I think we've kind of discussed this at nauseam. I am just clear, just to have it clear across the board so there's no confusion, not only to the council, but to public. So they understand how much time they have as far as five minutes just across the board in general. That's just my two cents on it. And so that's kind of where.
So is your request to have it on as a discussion item under old business and then a possible ordinance under new business?
I like what Sylvia said.
Okay, so I'm going to clarify.
Yeah, so I'm good with that.
That's your request, on the next council agenda?
On the next council agenda, so we can just get this done and so the public can have this and so we can move forward with this. I don't like it as a sticking item, especially for the public.
Okay, all righty. Any other councilmembers have an agenda request? Okay, anybody down here have any agenda requests? Councilmember Rick, do you have an agenda request?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right, that takes us to announcement of an executive session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have two executive sessions to request. The first one is pursuant to CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four two four for the purpose of review, approval and amendment of executive session minutes and CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four two four E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators for a reservoir project.
Okay, we have a request from the city clerk to go into executive session. What would council like to do with that? Councilmember Estes?
Move to go into executive session.
Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
I vote yes, but I will be unable to attend the executive session.
Thank you, sir. Seven yes, motion carried. All right, thank you very much. This adjourns our meeting for tonight.